We're at 6:58, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Should we go in and get started, guys?
And then I said...
Twins are waiting.
Okay. Fine. Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. So we'll call the Chaska City Council meeting on Monday, October 7th to order. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Mr. Nate, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Gra.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wong.
Here.
And Mayor Winchittle is out tonight.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda for this evening?
Yep.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
So a motion by Hubbard, second by Hatfield. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now it's time for the visitor presentation, so if anyone here has anything they'd like to discuss that's not already on the agenda, feel free to approach the podium. Seeing as there are no takers, we'll move on. All right, so if we consent, has everyone had a chance to review the consent items for this evening?
Mayor Pro Tem Wong, we need to approve the minutes.
Oh. I'm going with the paper version, the minutes...
Yeah, it's not on here either. But you're right, we need to approve.
So it's possible, I don't know if we can see the minutes?
No, I can't see the minutes on the end.
No.
No.
Okay, so why don't we just...
It was just a week ago, so I'm not sure if they came back yet.
They may not have come through, so we'll assume they'll be on the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll approve the minutes for the next one. We should be okay. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda or consent items? Do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
So a motion by Gra, second by Hatfield. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So for the action items, the first item of the evening is adopt resolution 2019-108. It's a public hearing for, a public assessment hearing for the resolution approving the imposition of service charges for the 2020 Chaska Downtown Special Services District.
Mayor Pro Tem Nate will take this one.
Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem, this is an item that comes on an annual basis in front of the council to establish the Downtown Chaska Special Service District. The service district is an extra assessment fee that gets charged to the commercial business properties that are in downtown Chaska. The service charge or service fee that's assessed against the property is then used to fund the activities of the special service district. So generally speaking, the intent of a special service district is to provide additional services that go above and beyond sort of the baseline that the city would provide. So in the case of downtown Chaska, there's many different events at the special service district, sponsors like the Second Street Black Party, Hometown Holiday are two that they're highly involved in. Other things that they do include bringing in some training and things for the business owners, marketing for downtown and marketing for the businesses that are located downtown, and a number of other things. So we've got a couple representatives, Dan Keport and Jen Angel. Dan is the president of the Special Service District Board, and Jen is the administrator of the Special Service District, so they'll be speaking a little bit more detail about some of the work and things that they've been doing. The district was established in 2014. Each year, by statute, we do need to have the council approve their proposed budget. So this year, they're proposing the same budget as they had last year. They're not changing it, so it's $58,100 is what would be the budget for the special service district and is then gets, you know, levied across the properties that are in the district. The service charge rate is $1.04 per $1,000 in property value, which is a 4.6% decrease from the previous year. This is because the budget has stayed the same and property values have gone up downtown, so the burden on each property, at least by value, decreases as a result of that. Their budget has remained the same for the last, one, two, three, four years, and they've continued to, I think over that time, expand the services and what they're bringing to downtown. So staff is going to be recommending that due to the success of the district, their continued work and development on what they do, that council does consider approving the proposed budget and the service charge for 2020. With that, I leave it up to any questions, or if you want to invite our guests up to speak on behalf of the district. We can do that as well.
So any questions?
I have no questions at this time. I'd like to hear from them.
I did have one question. I mean, this might be, well, one question was for the 2020 requested and, you know, looking at the packet, the operating budget was like $2,000 less than the previous three years, even though you mentioned that it's the same operating budget, so I was wondering what the variance was.
So I don't know if you want to chime in on that one, Jen?
Um, so we had always budgeted...
Come on up.
And state your name, please.
I mean, I am loud, but I'll... We had always budgeted $2,000 in...
Jen, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, guys.
Please, thank you.
I'm just jumping right in. Jen Angel, I'm the Downtown Chaska Special Services District Administrator. World's longest title and pretty awesome. Not me, the title. So that number differed this year because we had always assumed we would take in some revenue, so we had a $2,000 potential revenue income that we added to the budget, and we removed that this year. A lot of what we anticipated that coming from, T-shirt sales, hat sales with the logo and stuff, we haven't moved down that path yet. There's a lot more work that needs to be done for us to be able to sell things, and really, we have our focus on other things that really drive the engagement and the retention for the businesses down here. So that's why the number shifted.
All right, yeah, if you both want to give your update, that'd be fantastic.
Good evening, council members. My name's Dan Keport. I own Dolce Vita Wine Shop downtown Chaska. I've lived in Chaska 25 years, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as president of the Downtown Business Alliance. The council members' faces I'm looking at tonight are different than the ones I was looking at a year ago, so I thought it might be valuable for you if I took a minute and stepped back and kind of gave you how this entity came to be and hopefully that'll help you understand what we're trying to accomplish here. But first, I want to distinguish what is the Chaska Downtown Business Alliance relative to the Special Services District, because they are two separate and distinct kinds of things. The Chaska Downtown Business Alliance is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit entity that was created 10 or 11 years ago by a group of Chaska businesses that looked around and saw downtown that was struggling, had a lot of empty storefronts, you know, had some issues with the city relative to signs, and had saw a lot of opportunities, a lot of potential for Chaska that just wasn't being realized. So we banded together, formed this entity to allow us to speak as one voice to the city and to communicate with each other about what was going on and where the opportunities were and what we should be doing. So this entity voted in 2014 to start taxing ourselves through a mechanism called the Special Services District. So that Special Services District is a taxing district. It's not an entity, but it's a means of raising money then that the city contracts with the Downtown Business Alliance to spend on behalf of the downtown business community to try to reach our goals. And so the Downtown Business Alliance doesn't have much money, but the Special Services District allows us to have an administrator, to have boots on the ground, to do events, to do social media marketing, to put on classes for the business community, so to do a lot of the things that we're doing to try to create a lively, productive, robust downtown business community. So I've got a vision and a mission statement here. The mission of the Chaska Downtown Special Service District is to assist in creating and promoting a downtown business district that reflects and preserves our small-town values, our atmosphere, unique character and values. And the priorities of the Special Services District are marketing and promoting local businesses via online and offline marketing strategies, producing and promoting local events that attract customers to the downtown, and creating more opportunities for business and property owners to communicate with one another as well as stay abreast of what's happening in downtown, and to, in the aggregate, create a thriving downtown business community. So when you look at the breakdown of our budget, we spend money toward marketing and promotion, and we do actually quite a bit of social media marketing, and that's been very effective. We also have a really terrific mailer that's the kind of thing you see stuck to refrigerators with all the events that are coming up over the course of the year downtown. And we do promotional events to draw customers downtown, things, you know, like our Hometown Holiday and Oktoberfest that we just finished. We have just Special Services District Operations and Communications. I think that's actually one of our more important functions is to keep the channel communications open amongst the downtown business community and with the city. We have administration, which is Jen, she's our boots on the ground. And then we also work on business recruitment and retention. One of the current efforts there is signage. We think signage is really, really key for getting downtown to the next level, both within the downtown community as well as the trails that make this a destination or could make this a destination for lots of recreational activities. So, you know, I think back to when we first formed this organization, really didn't have much money. We got a lot of stuff done on the communication side and working with the city on signs, and we were deeply involved in helping develop the downtown revitalization master plan. And, but the big frustration we had is this was a whole bunch of business owners and building owners that were busy, and it was hard. It was hard to do marketing and promotion, it was hard to do events, because when you do an event like Hometown Holiday, it absolutely is consuming for somebody, and that hurts their business to be spending 20 or 30 hours a week doing an event, not running their business. And it just was not a sustainable model. Once we got the funds in place from the Special Services District, now we have a person that actually is paid to spend the time to make that stuff happen, and it's happening, and it's been fantastic. So I think the progress that's been made is fantastic. So we couldn't be more happy with how things are going with the district and with the Downtown Business Alliance. So I guess with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that people may have.
Couple comments. One, I have your mail piece attached to my refrigerator. Two, whoops, hit my mic when I do that. I was on the Human Rights Commission for a long time, and we used to do the Hometown Holidays in the park with the tree lighting, and it was, it's really exciting to see that event grow. I was on the committee when you guys didn't have this group, but there were some retailers that wanted to step in and do something more, and they kind of had their own little group, and they came and backed us, and it's just nice to see that take off years later. So commend you guys for that, because you really took that and grew it, which was great. Just a couple of questions. So the tax on the business, that's just like, so it's based on property square footage, but, you know, I see some of these buildings, like they obviously have multiple tenants, so is it based on their square footage? Like, do they, is it like split, like evenly across the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so the way that it's looked at, it's a lot like any other, you know, property tax where it's based on the value of the building. Now, some buildings have multiple uses in them, so what we're taxing for is the square footage that's used for commercial purposes. You know, there's some, especially in downtown, there's many buildings that have a residential component on top, and then there's maybe a commercial on the first level. So in those cases, what we're doing is understanding, you know, what proportion of the building is dedicated to the business use, and that's the portion of the value that's then given...
And that's actually required by state statute, too.
Okay, because I was just curious, like, on a building that has, like, let's say it's got, you know, 2,000 square feet, 1,500 of it is being taken up by one business and 500 is being taken up of another, they pay different rates into this?
Well, essentially, the building is taxed, and the building owner has to make a decision of how and whether to allocate that cost.
Okay, okay. So they're, okay.
So very similar to property taxes, you know, do they decide to pass everything on, part of their lease agreement?
Okay. That was just my curiosity with that. Second question is, like, how are, like, what's the take of the businesses that are under this? I know that there probably, there's a lot of different businesses, like, what's the atmosphere as far as this in general for all the businesses?
You know, I guess my sense of that is it's generally been very positive. I mean, this is a tax, you're not going to get 100% joy and happiness on this. I mean, there, and there are businesses that benefit more directly, and some that benefit less directly. So if you're an insurance office, let's say, that doesn't rely on retail traffic to come in, you have to be content with the notion that we're trying to increase the value of your building, you know? And I think that's happening, you know? But it's a pretty indirect thing, and it's hard to see the immediate, you know, this, okay, I spent $600 on this fee for this year, and what am I getting?
That was like, kind of walking down my last question, which was, you know, non-retail businesses. How much are they being promoted under this? Because obviously, this is an easy thing to promote retail stuff with, but...
Yeah, and we've had that discussion a number of times in our board meetings, and again, it's an indirect benefit, and we have looked at, you know, one of the things we've put on our downtown Chaska website is a place to list your leased space, you know? So that's something for the building owner that's, you know, one more place to list if they do have a space open. And we've, I don't know, maybe, do you want to comment to that a little bit, too?
I think one of the things that we, because it is a lot of education with those individuals who don't always feel like they have a direct impact in what we do. And one of the things that we just talked about with Oktoberfest was the small amount of social media money that we spent getting that event out there. It touched 1.5 million people. We had 3,000 people saying they were coming to the event, and we probably had about that many show up. And that's great for, obviously, Linda, who had stuff out front and she was selling things, cool. But the whole point is that we brought 3,000 people down to downtown Chaska that may not have been down here before, and they parked, and they walked, and they took a bus up to Shram, and they took the bus back down. And so our hope is that they engage with the other businesses, maybe not at that point, but at some time, they realize, hey, there is an insurance, or there's a barber down here, or I had no idea there were all these restaurants, because I haven't been down before. And so that's a lot of what we try and work with the businesses on. While you may not be something, social media sharing, we're still going to use social media to get people down here and to educate them on what Chaska has.
I think another thing that you all have done that's a little less visible is that training opportunity that is provided to the businesses, and that's open to anyone. So they talk about marketing, using social media, you know, different topics like that that, you know, I think different businesses, whether you're service-oriented or more retail-oriented, can benefit from thinking through some of those strategies.
And if I could add to that, too, we, again, see a really critical part of our mission as communication between the city and the business community and within the business community. So, for example, when we had road construction, you know, major arteries through Chaska are closed, we are deeply involved in that, because that matters a lot to the businesses downtown. And so the communication that happens around that is a big deal. And so that's another example of that sort of thing, so.
Great.
Other questions?
Are there other examples of other cities that do stuff similar?
Yeah, this concept of a special services district is, we're doing, I think, exactly what that concept envisioned. It's to do things that a city wouldn't do otherwise, or a district wouldn't do. It doesn't have to be a city. I mean, I think Minneapolis has several of these districts in different parts of the city.
Twenty-some districts, I think, in the city, based on neighborhoods.
So this is right in the sweet spot of what these things are about.
But there's other cities similar to Chaska that have these in place. I mean, you see the Excelsiors and the Stowaters, the Redwings, a lot of places that you see there's extra stuff being done that's sort of above and beyond what you might recognize a typical city would do. A lot of times, it's special services districts that are doing this. So, you know, going around and, you know, sometimes you see special services districts being the ones that actually, you know, the flowers we have in downtown, they might purchase additional landscaping, or they might have a person, downtown Minneapolis, they have people that go around and pick up trash all the time. So it's, there's different things, but there's quite a few in the state that exist.
Really, when you put one of these together, you have to set some objectives. What is it you want to do? Then you got to go knocking on doors, as the Downtown Business Alliance did, to other businesses and property owners and say, hey, we want to tax you, and here's what we want to do with it. And you got to get them to vote yes. And if you don't, you don't have a special services district. And then it needs to be renewed every year, so every year comes in front of you guys to say, you hold us accountable. Are we doing what we said we do? And if we're not, it's over, we're done, but that, we don't have that funding source anymore, so.
So that actually raises me, my next question is, so you had to go, just on creation, get approval from business owners.
Yes.
Does that happen every so often, or is it indefinite now, or like, do you have just...
So if I might, every year, this defined state statute, there is a process on what we need to go through. So you called for this public hearing a few meetings back. In between that time and now, there were notices that were mailed out to each of the property owners directly to say, here's, you know, here's the charge that's being proposed as it would apply to your property specifically. And then they're given the opportunity to file an objection. If 35% of the property owners or property owners representing 35% of the land area within the district object, then the district can be essentially vetoed or nullified. So each year, we do that. We rarely have anyone. This year, we had the owner of the post office property file an objection. So that, I think, I can't think of another time we've had an objection filed during the course of this. So we did have that one this year, but that's not, that's not the 35% threshold that exists.
Is 35% by market value or 35% by number of properties?
By properties.
Both the city of Chaska would object, because you guys like to pay the most.
I guess, but, I mean, I guess to clarify, is it a number of properties? So for example, if like, you know, one, someone owns like a property on like a large block, that's only one property, right? But it could have a market value substantially larger than the two adjacent blocks.
Yep. So per the statute, to be specific, it says if owners of 35% or more of the land area in the district, subject to the service charge based on net tax capacity, or owners, individuals and businesses, business organizations, subject to 35% or more of the service charges to be imposed in the district, file an objection, and then it goes on.
So it's either, so it could be either geographic, because someone owns a large parcels of land that's subject to it, versus, or if the net value is significantly larger, because they own a very expensive piece of real estate.
Right. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Last question. This is just the downtown area. This doesn't include up, kind of, up 41.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, generally speaking, how we've defined it are the bridges. So you've got, as you're heading up 41, there's a bridge that kind of goes by the clayhalls. As you're heading south on 41, the bridge at the river. And then as you're heading on 61 through town, there's a bridge on the east side and the west side. What, east side is kind of your Arby's there, and the west side would be just after you pass for, Fireman's Park.
Okay, so even like down Wolf Flying Cloud, like Super America, the Caribou Coffee, that, those are not, they're not in the...
There's a map in there.
Oh, is there a map?
Yeah, in the, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
We actually have had requests for people to opt in that are outside of that district, so we're kind of working through, how would that work? Yep. You know, they want the benefit of the social media and the marketing and the promotion and the events and all that stuff. If they see value in that, they want in on that, and we really, right now, can't mention them. And we don't. We say, sorry, can't do that, you know, because it's tax money that has to be very specifically targeted according to the conditions under which we received it, so.
But it speaks to value and adds to people are asking to participate in it, too, so. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, some good stuff there. Bring it back to council, any discussion, thoughts?
Just a reminder, it is a public hearing.
That's right, so it is a public hearing, thank you. So open the public hearing at 7:23. I'm not going to gavel or anything, so. I feel like I could. And then, does anyone have anything they'd like to say, who's not anyone else? No? Okay. So close the public hearing at 7:24. All right, so bring it back to council for a discussion.
I think it's great. I mean, I get to sit in on their meetings, and they do really wonderful things, and I had no idea the extent of what they did. You know, it seems like just social media and stuff, but then you get in the crux of having, you know, Minda come and talk about the 141 is going to be closed and all of that. So it actually, the benefit is, was a lot more than I thought even, just seems like social media, and then you kind of get into, really, the benefit for these businesses is a lot more, so I've been really impressed and impressed with the group. They are super passionate about downtown, and I think I'm really lucky to have business owners that care that much about downtown Chaska.
Yeah, I was interested to hear the numbers of objections or not, because, I mean, that speaks for itself, because they're seeing the value and they're understanding it, they get it. I mean, no one likes paying taxes, that's a general rule of thumb, right? But if you, you know, as we've talked about here, if you see the value that you're getting out of that fee and the benefit you're getting, then it says, okay, that makes sense, because, you know, I can't, I can't get that advantage by spending my own piece of budget, but if I can consolidate all this money, then it really impacts, you know, the numbers with Oktoberfest were amazing, you shared that, thank you. So, yeah, I think, you know, that was, I was most curious on some of that information, and that's pretty cool, actually, to hear that. It's pretty rare to have anyone object.
I agree with Councilmember Gra. I wanted to see as far as the objection, just because it's an added, yeah, it's an added line on the budget, and I'm also an advocate of all businesses, but I'm an advocate of non-retail businesses as well, so I really wanted to make sure that all businesses felt like it was really a worthwhile investment for them, and it's really great to see that. And like I said, I really like you guys with the events and just the marketing of them. I've personally been enjoying, so you do a great job.
I think they've become a really important voice, too, when it comes to getting major things done for downtown. 41 is a good example. We're being pretty successful right now in a grant application process for Highway 41 to get some of the final funding, and a big part of that is having the Downtown Business Alliance and the businesses through the Special Service District being able to act as a one voice together. You know, instead of trying to get, you know, go up to every single business and try to get them to participate in that, we can go right to them. They speak for the entire business community, and it's really, it makes a much larger voice.
I think another benefit we've seen is we have a fairly popular sign grant program for downtown where the city is able to contribute up to $2,500 for a $5,000 sign, dollar-for-dollar match. We, that program got initially started through some seed money that the city received through a grant, and we had been slowly, you know, working our way through that pot of dollars, and as we got towards the end, no one wanted to see that go away, so the Special Service District is now the funding source for that program to go ongoing. So we're able to, we're continuing to work with businesses downtown and get signs that are put up that are at a higher quality and a little bit more compatible with the historic nature of downtown as a result of that grant program, so. Just yet one more thing that they've been working on.
You know, I've been fortunate to have sat in on some of your meetings, and, you know, I think what you guys do is really fantastic, and it's really of high value to the community, because I think that one of the key things is that there's strength in numbers, right? If you take the individual amount that a particular property owner might have in value that they could have, that would have been taken from, you know, from the Special Services District, you can't really do that much with it. I mean, you could do like a promotion here or there, but you can't generate as an individual with that amount of money. The number of... The number of events, the amount of communications, reaching out to thousands of people, it's, it's a huge value, right? But it's also that value of being able to say, as a whole, there's no one else that will stand up for and champion the interests of the downtown business owners, except for the downtown business owners, right? And to have a voice that represents you with no other conflict of interest to say, this is who we represent, this is us, is hugely important to help, you know, preserve that integrity of the values that you represent, and it also helps enhance Chaska too by, by demonstrating the strength of the, um, the commitment that is brought to the Chaska business community. So I think that's a really, really vital thing that's, you know, that contributes to the overall benefit of the entire greater Chaska community. So, great work, and keep it up.
One thing I just wanted to mention was, um, that I think is really interesting as we talk about retail businesses and, you know, what's the benefit to non-retail businesses, and if you look at the makeup of the board of directors, it's a really good mix of non-retail and retail businesses, property owners and non-property owners. And that speaks a lot too, to just, you know, the benefit it does have, and not just to retail. So I think that's really an interesting point too.
Did you, did you do that on purpose, or is that just happenstance?
It just happened.
Okay. No, I, it's great.
Take the credit, Dan. You're very thoughtful.
It is a really good mix though, so it's a good.
How, how often do you meet?
We have, uh, monthly board meetings, and then quarterly, uh, social slash quarterly meetings, where we try to get a bigger group, you know, it's, when, when times are good, it's hard to get people to come out to meetings. When times are tough, everybody's got a concern that they want to talk about, so. So that has changed up and down over the years, but, um, at, at least once a month.
Great. That's great.
Cool. Any other thoughts, questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nine dash one oh eight. Adopt resolution approving the imposition of service charges for the twenty-twenty Chaska Downtown Special Service District.
Second.
Don't mush by Gra, second by Hatfield. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So off to our next item here. Um, adopt resolution twenty-nine one oh five, and resolution twenty-nineteen one oh six, issuance of sale of bonds, series twenty nineteen B and series twenty nineteen C.
Mayor, uh, pro time and council members, the item in front of you tonight is in relation to two bond, uh, sales that we actually just went through today. Uh, this is something that, uh, we had set, uh, the set sale date, uh, by the council several weeks ago, uh, and has to do with basically reimbursing ourselves for, uh, projects that we've had over the last couple of years that we've always intended to bond for, uh, internally finance those until we actually went and sold the bonds. We try to, you know, we have multiple projects that occur during the year, we try to consolidate those all into one, uh, time so that we have a bigger bond issuance to go out, and we get a little bit better marketability out there. Uh, this is actually the first of a set of two, uh, bond sales we're gonna do this year. We're currently working on one for, uh, later this year that would be more taxable type of, of projects that are out there. David McGilvery is here from, uh, can't say Springstead anymore. Baker Tilly. Uh, he is, uh, part of our, uh, financial advisor group, uh, who goes out and helps structures and sell them. Noel Grasek, our administrative service director, uh, that puts this together internally, uh, for us, and they're both here to talk about the real positive results we had, uh, for sales today.
Hi, I'm Dave McGilvery, a principal of Baker Tilly, formerly of Springstead, and I worked with the city a very long time. My great-grandmother owned a store in the downtown, uh, so I have some Chaska roots.
What do they think about a special services district?
She, she was actually in the furniture funeral business, and so. So, uh, we have two actions, um, the first one is the, for the twenty-nineteen B issue, and that's five million, uh, five-point-six-eight million. These are geo-bonds. They fund, uh, the construction of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen street program, Bavaria Downs, and miscellaneous sort of equipment for its various city departments. They're repaid by property taxes and special assessments in, in terms of the street programs and Bavaria Downs. The next one's the twenty-nineteen Cs, that's a, a sister issue of the Bs, meaning the, it's, uh, geo utility bonds, and it funds the utility improvements that are associated with the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen street projects. And those are repaid by, uh, revenues of the utility system. The geo in front of that is general obligation, and, um, I just want to explain that, a general obligation is a legal pledge, where you say, uh, no matter what, you will raise property taxes to whatever it takes to make these bond payments, and that's your most secure, um, form of debt if you're investing in these, and most everybody in Minnesota does this all the time. Um, so you have your primary sources assessments, you have utility payments, and then you have this as a backstop. So, we're gonna get in the credit rating, which is G, uh, general obligation rating, and I just want to put that context on. So we took, uh, competitive bids via the internet on, at ten o'clock this morning. Uh, this is, you will see these in the future, this is our yellow piece of paper that has the bond sale results. So we put that out on the internet, uh, and distributed a bunch of marketing documents a week or so ago, and then, uh, you know, so bidding process, a competitive bid, and they have to submit them via this internet, uh, bidding platform by ten, ten AM. So who is bidding on these? Investment banking firms. So you'll see RW Baird, which is based in Milwaukee, and they have all these other folks with them, all right? RW Baird is the leader, they submit, then all these other investment bankers are part of that, uh, one bid. And if you turn the page, and they got the best bid, as long as we're here. So they bid the best bid, which was one-point-nine, one-point-nine-six-eight percent over there on the right-hand side. Okay, with me? And that is what we call true interest rate, which means it's the present value of all this, so it means what's worth it today's dollars. And then, uh, page two, you had four bids, um, then you had, uh, bit down there says Morgan Stanley, that's, you know, a New York firm. Uh, they'd be, uh, page, the back of the first page. Uh, BOK and Hutchinson Shaki out of Chicago. So it's this national, national people have access and, and, yeah, and the idea is you have, you try to get the lowest interest rate. So in this case, for the first issue, that five-point-six-eight million, for the geo, uh, for the street program, the lowest or best bid was from RW Baird, one-point-nine-six-eight percent. I'm gonna come back to the market at the end, but it was slightly above our estimate, but, you know, pretty, pretty close. Uh, the second bond sale that occurred at the same time, this all happens concurrently, and, uh, this is the utility, and, um, RW Baird won again, you had the same, uh, nope, you had slightly different bidders, uh, but RW Baird had the lowest bid, two-point-zero-six percent, and this transaction, and, um, the second piece of paper. And then the other bidders are in the back, and, uh, Morgan Stanley again, then Bernardi, and then Hutchinson. Um, so one question, why is this two-oh-six, and the other one was one-ninety-six? And the answer is, the second one has a longer repayment term, and so interest rates go up over time, so it's slightly higher. That's why that, is what it is. Um, just generally the market, uh, well, first, these are the lowest interest rates you've received since twenty-twelve.
I was gonna say, it might even be the lowest ever.
Well, and before that, I mean, it's maybe one time in the last twenty years that it was lower than this. And so, uh, and, you know, interest rates are really low, and, um, so if you're selling debt, it's a good time to be selling debt. Um, so you have that, uh, we did, we had some other sales today, and Noel and I were going over those, and you, uh, you compare very favorably with those, not, they're not all the same, some of, of higher credit ratings and different terms, but you did very well in comparison to those. Um, just one more area I'd like to talk about, and that is the credit rating, so I believe this is in your packet, to, uh, you know, at these times, well, generally, all the time, if you're in the market con, it's good to have, uh, tell the investors what your credit quality is, just like an individual or a household or a business. So you go through a fairly rigorous process, you work with one of the three national rating firms, Standard and Poor's, and I'll just quickly go over what all this means. Um, the highest possible credit rating you can have is triple-A. And there are, well, I don't know if Minneapolis is triple anymore. Um, there are probably ten entities in, or so, state of Minnesota that have triple-A. Rochester, Minnesota, home of the Mayo Clinic, has a triple. Um, Egan has a triple, uh, folks like that. Now, you usually have to have, be of a certain size, and actually, the best comparable thing to, it's like a personal credit rating or credit score is, you know, if you have a lot of money and a high income and not a lot of debt, you have a high, a, a, a good credit score. Um, so you have ten or twelve in Minnesota that are triple, and the next category under that is double-A, and you're in the double-A category. So you're really close to that. In the double-A category, there are three levels, double-A plus, double-A, and double-A minus, high, medium, lower end. So you're double-A, so you're what we call two notches below the triple-A. So, um, you know, it might be, you never know. Um, you know, uh, you're a high-growth suburb, and so you have, you know, you, the school system are issuing debt, because you have to fund infrastructure and do other things, and so, you know, there's a possibility you get to the triple-A, it's sort of when, and I think it's kind of set up for that. So, uh, Standard and Poor's, and I'll be brief, because I know the Twins game is gonna be on soon, and they look at four things, uh, they look at, uh, your, the biggest ones are your economy and finance. Those are the drivers of the credit rating, and after that is debt, and then, uh, governance and management. And I'll just briefly go through, in your packet, and they have these sort of bullet summary items. And they have lingo, and their lingo is, if they say very strong, that's the best you can get. If they say strong, you know, it's very good. And they have adequate, which is, you know, in the middle, and they have weak, all right? So the more very strongs and strong you have in the right categories, again, socioeconomic, finances, the higher your rating. So if you go just briefly down their bullets, um, uh, the geo rating, this is the general obligation rating, like I did the, uh, the internal statements, very strong economy, very strong economy, uh, strong management with good financial policies and practices. Now, when they say management, uh, it's not just, uh, Matt and his staff, it's, also goes to governance, the sort of, uh, decisions you make, you have adopted policies, uh, when there's tough decisions, you know, financially, do you make them? Um, so they look at that as well as the policies. Uh, adequate budget performance, and this one I wouldn't be too upset about adequate, because when you have a certain amount of fund balance, your budget can kind of float around balance if it's down a little bit or up a little bit, doesn't make any difference, but their methodology says adequate if it's, okay? So I wouldn't get, that isn't that big a deal. Strong budgetary flexibility, which is a big deal, and that's a general fund, fund balance. So keeping it at the right levels is important in your, in your budgeting practice. Uh, strong, uh, very strong liquidity, so that's total cash, that's good. Now here's the one, they have one weak, and they say weak debt and contingent liability positions. So I want to take that apart. When they say debt, they're talking about all public debt on your tax base, so that's city, school, county, for the most part. The other thing, it's pensions, so, you know, basically all, school district, county, city, you know, they're part of state pension systems, and they do their own valuation. So it's not just, you say weak debt, it's not just the city situation, it's all these things, plus the status of the state pension, and your allocation of that liability against your tax base. So, we can come, you know, not tonight, but maybe, I'll be back in a month if you want to have more questions. And then there's something, it's strong institutional framework, and that's basically, uh, all the cities in Minnesota have the same, it's really, how much leash does the state of Minnesota give to, to cities in the state to, uh, set their own destiny? And so that's what that is, it's strong. So that's the answer on the rating, double-A, excellent. Uh, the key is, uh, the better the credit rating, the lower the interest cost, the lower the draw, uh, the lower the property tax assessments, utility bills are for paying off the debt. So that's the linkage. So, um, we would recommend a ward to RW Baird, both transactions. Will I take any questions?
The, back in the sixties, early sixties, I worked for a municipal investment banking firm. If you got three percent, you were doing great.
Yeah.
And then secondly, is, isn't unusual to have this number of one group?
Yes, and RW Baird just, I mean, every time they bid a deal, they've got this list, so they have, uh, this established banking relationship, and that's what they do.
And then when did they start that the short-term is higher interest rate than the long-term?
Short, long, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the bonds maturing in two thousand and twenty-two have a five percent on it?
Oh, that.
And the two-thirty-nine have a two-and-a-half percent on it?
That's a pricing mechanism, uh, that, uh, various, various types of investors, uh, think that sooner or later, rates will go up. So if you're running, uh, a mutual fund and you buy this, and you, you don't want everybody that's buying into your mutual fund to take a loss because interest rates went up, so they, uh, they bid at a rate, this is a slippery slope in terms of complexity, but, um, uh, they bid a higher rate than the market, one, so that, uh, they don't have a capital loss if the market goes up. Two, they give you some money upfront to pay off the difference between, what, five percent and one-point-three or something? And the city has elected to keep that to help fund the twenty-nineteen street program. So, uh, it's, it comes and goes in different markets, but interest rates have been so low, all these people want to hedge that the rates will go up, so they, they put those, that prices.
Then one last question, the Bernardi Securities, you're, the principals in the Bernardi Securities, are those the Bernardis that used to own half of Chaska?
No, they're using it from Chicago, unless they own half of Chaska, but, no, that's a Chicago firm.
Question, um, if you were to do this tomorrow, let's say, would the, would the rates be much different? Like, is it just, is it really like a?
I don't know, it would not be much different.
Okay, just, just out of curiosity.
I mean, I mean, uh, no.
It probably would be different, but not much different.
Yeah, we talk about a basis point, which is one one-hundredth of one percent, so one-point-nine-six, one basis point is one-point-nine-seven percent, you know, so, in the, in the municipal bond market, unless there's something drops through the floor, there's not a radical change.
Okay, okay.
One last question, does all the garbage that's going on in the federal government and, and P, does that affect this market at all?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, the world, Fed, uh, why these municipal rates are so low is because the US Treasury is so low. Why is the Treasury so low? Well, because the US economy really isn't doing that well, and the world economy is doing worse, so they're coming and trying to get by US Treasuries, drives down the interest rate, drives down the municipal rate.
On the bond reading snapshot, with the economy, is that like in current time, or are they looking outwardly, or past tense?
It's a mix of, I mean, uh, it's a mix of, you know, these are, these are bad credit people, so they look at facts, so what, what is there right now? But it's also, you know, their customers are the investors, not you, so they don't want surprises, they do look what's going on, so we talk a lot about building permits with them, and the types of building permits. And when you have a two-point-five percent unemployment rate in Chaska, so, um, you know, it's those sorts of things.
So this is like, so this whole, the bond market's a little new to me, so I mean, is it something where you have like earnings calls, things like that, with, the equivalent of an earnings call with, like, your institutional investors?
I'm sorry?
Do you have like the equivalent of earnings calls with an institutional investors?
Earnings calls?
Yeah, I mean, kind of the equivalent of in the bond market or something like that.
You know, these, um, general obligation bonds.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of things, one, you know, if you're the, a very large issuer.
Yeah.
You know, the New York Turnpike Authority, and I work with a good share of the major issuers in this state, and, but the general obligation bonds are pretty transparent, everybody knows it's the property tax. Uh, if you're something like, you know, a major issuer and it's, uh, not general obligation, then they would have investor pages on their website and some of those. This, because of the size, uh, double-A geo-rating, you know, Chaska really, uh, wouldn't have that. And in actuality, the credit rate, credit rate agencies become sort of the, you know, the go-to resource for the institutional investors.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's see, so this is not a public hearing, but no one else in the audience here. So, but any other discussion?
I make a motion. Do we do?
Real quick, there's two motions that are proposed.
Yeah.
There's a blank on the first one. The amount on that motion would be the par amount of the B bond, which is five million six hundred and eighty thousand. And then on the second motion, which is for the C, 2019 C series, the amount would be two million one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Each motion should be acted on separately.
So what was the second number?
Two million one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So when I make them, be specific.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's two separate motions, each should be acted on separately.
I will do, yeah.
And you, you can have the honors.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do the first one here. Adopt, make, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2019 dash one oh five. The issuance and sale of bonds for the five million six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think I did that right, five B, okay.
My second, Pat.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second on that, who had the second?
All right, so who'd like to make the motion on the second item for 2019 B, or should it be C, sorry?
I'll make a motion for 2019 C, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For two point one three five million.
So.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Hatfield, second by Hubbard. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that one's done. Now, we'll bring us to the last item, which is adopt resolution 2019 one oh seven, authorize the call of the general obligation and capital improvement refunding bonds series two thousand nine B.
Mayor Protona, Councilmember's item tonight is in relation to an existing bond that we have in place, that we have determined that it is feasible to call that now. I'll have David come up and talk a little bit about what it means to authorize the call of a GO bond and then some of the benefits we'll get by being able to release some dollars that have been encumbered through that process.
David Gilray, Beggar Tilly. Periodically, the city staff, often in conjunction with us, goes through all of your debt and says it's a proactive way to do some debt management to improve, you know, your balance sheet, reduce liabilities or save money. And so most all, the bond yourself provide you with an option to prepay it at your sole discretion after a certain time period. And so that's the case with these two thousand nine Bs. So you have, you know, just a couple hundred thousand left on this, two hundred thousand and change. And, and so we look at that and, and plus, you've been able to have some revenues that are pledged and dedicated for the debt service of these bonds. And it's more than the two hundred thousand that's outstanding. And so you can't invest, you know, you cannot invest that at this, you invested at a lower rate because that's a market level than when you're paying out of the debt. So you can save money by, you know, getting rid of it. And so the money's there. We pay these off, you'd have less debt, you'd have less net interest cost. And so we get rid of that. And then that also, then the money that was dedicated for that gets freed up to do other projects, et cetera. Noel, if you want to get into details of that. So it's just good stewardship and good housekeeping of these outstanding debts where these opportunities exist.
Any questions?
To put it in my terms, it's like paint off my car early.
And that you have money sitting aside to pay it and you don't want to have to set it aside anymore.
Got it, right.
And the rate on your car loan is higher than you can invest it at.
Makes sense.
Anything else?
I make, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 29 dash one oh seven, authorize call of GO capital improvement refunding bonds series two thousand nine B.
Second.
So motion by Grau, second by Hubbard. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Done. All right, off we are to bills, the excitement of the evening.
I thought the bonds were the most exciting part.
The bonds are pretty darn exciting. Thank you for the excitement there.
Learned a lot, that was good.
Yeah, and just, you know, one thing, you know, I'd mentioned that, you know, one of the things that we do is we try, you know, we have a lot of projects that go on during the year. And, you know, a lot of cities, you know, I talked about it in our credit report, that we have a lot of liquidity in, in dollars and, you know, there's not unlimited liquidity. But what it does allow us to do is to, you know, be able to take on these projects without having to go sell debt for each single one, because there's issuance costs that go with all of those. And so, you know, a good part of doing that is we get a better overall cost for it. But it is a big deal then when we actually do sell the debt because we can't carry that liquidity forever for projects that are meant to have dollars coming in each year to, to pay them off. So I think the credit report did a good job of sort of underscoring that we have more flexibility than some cities, especially because of our utility accounts to be able to have liquidity. But it is a big deal when we do this because, you know, like I said, we don't have unlimited liquidity, so.
Yep. All right, so bills, any questions?
I had a couple.
Hmm?
On page one of the, the thing that says page one. The very first thing, blue card renewal officer for two thousand across the street productions. I just have no idea what any of that means.
Oh, it's the very first thing?
Yeah, the very first thing.
I'd actually have to check that out.
Okay, I tried like Googling and stuff and just.
Yeah, I'll find that out.
And then, my other one was on page three for Scott Congdon, like letterhead and building permit forms. I feel like we had a question on him before for something like really different. So it just seems that the, some of the bills are.
What page was that?
That's page three.
The bottom of page three.
It's like second from the bottom.
Yes, second from the bottom. It's just two, so that, it's not the amount really, but just that, the, the things that are going to him seem to be like different.
Yeah, the, the.
I think, what was the last one?
I think it wasn't, I don't think it's supposed to be building permit forms, so that's our new animal control.
Oh, okay.
And so they had to do things like getting new forms put together and, you know, basically create the new process for the new animal control person. So I can find out specifically what that is, but it, but there's a lot of things that had to get changed over when we changed.
So that's the new one? Because in the last meeting, the new, they like, it was a totally different name that was being paid for impound stuff. Is that the old?
I thought that was Scott Congdon.
No, I think that, I think last time Scott Congdon was the, like rabies thing.
Let me find out.
Let me go back. Yeah, it just seems like he's been paid for a variety of things.
Okay.
Those are the only two questions I have.
All right.
Other questions? I have, if no one else has any, I'll go, I've only got a few. So page one, page one, there's an item for Brian Rock products and this is, I was kind of curious what the, I mean, it's a lot of rock. I mean, I'm kind of curious, I'm, one, I'm kind of curious, like, how much does eleven thousand dollars of rock buy you? Right?
Yeah.
I mean, does it buy you roll too or just rock? Sorry.
So.
The other one is, I was just, the other was, what's the, what was the project that was associated with it?
I don't know what specific one, because this is one, we get rock, like if you go out to our, I call the Boneyards, but at our Public Works Building, we have piles of different types of material that we use. This rock for soils correction can be for a variety of projects. So we get a stockpile to be able to deal for, sometimes we have trails that we need to replace in order to re-black tap and we have to dig it up and recompact classified. So it's for general material that we purchase that.
Gotcha, so this is, could be like, this could be like a variation of different types of rock products, that, for class five, plus or some other.
Yeah, chances are a lot of it's class five because we, we use that for any type of repair stuff that we do.
Okay. Sounds good. Page eleven, there is an item for Stantec, but it's kind of like two-thirds of the way from, or, sorry, a third of the way from the bottom. This particular item was twenty-two thousand five sixty-nine for Creek Road. I was wondering, because it seemed like it was quite a lot, but I don't, but I was thinking, I don't remember anything going on in Creek Road. But there was a repair a couple of years ago for like the washout, but that was funded different, that's funded for something else. That's funded, I recall, from like the state or something, from some disaster funds.
Yeah, this is actually, has to do with the planning that we have for, so up, if you know where the control property is on Creek Road, it's up sort of farther, right before you sort of go under two twelve. So at that point is where Savannah Way is going to connect up with Creek Road, you know, make the connectional way to Clover Ridge Drive. And so we've had to do quite a bit of planning to plan for that because we're in the process of trying to acquire that property for that project. So basically, the, the work you have here is, is not physical work, it's design work for designing that road section.
Okay. And then so that is in preparation for like, you know, for this, and the real estate activities that go along with that?
Yeah, the, we're in the process of trying to do that now. The, there's really two things that you'll see with Creek Road. One is the utility extension, so that's a sewer extension to go up to serve the new industrial area on the west side of the new interchange. So that's where the sewer actually goes up for that. And the other one is actually making that connection of Savannah Way up to the north.
Okay.
And just, we're in the process of sort of looking at this now, but we're trying to be prepared so that if we saw landowners wanting to move on, on industrial properties next summer, that we'd be in a position to be able to have everything designed and ready to go, to be able to move on that so that we try to expedite, you know, being able to allow development out there. But then the other part of it too is that, you know, the collector, we have no collector road on the west side of the community right now. And so Savannah Way and Clover Ridge end up being the collector road on the, on the west side of town. So it's being prepared when development's reached a point where we really need two accesses out of the southwest Chaska area.
So in a sense that this is that preparation work so that way when the, we're ready to, when the sale is ready or the development's ready to go, that we already have the plans in place, including the utilities, sewers and other, and other easements and things like that are required?
Yep, yep.
Last one was on page thirteen, TransUnion Risk and Alternative Data Solutions. There's an item for data processing. I don't remember this vendor coming up.
See, Noel, do you know this one?
I have to look it up.
Okay, we can look that up.
Yeah. That was kind of a very interesting name. I'm not sure, I was kind of wondering what that was for.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve of this.
I second that motion.
So motion by Hubbard, second by Grau. Any further discussion? So Nate, we'd like to do the roll call. Yes, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Grau?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
I should have said Mayor Proton Wong, sorry. Sounds good. And so the bills have pa, have been paid and other business. So go around the horn, Nate?
I don't have anything tonight.
I had something. Dunkin' Donuts opened today.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I can't, I couldn't see it because I see the.
This is a Chaska Dunkin'.
No, I, I saw her water bottle in front of yours.
Oh, oh. Yeah, I didn't write it down. I guess it's just that Chaska Dunkin's open.
They sold, sold out of donuts.
Oh, for real?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we went in there about five-ish and they were out of donuts.
Oh.
I think it's some pent-up demand in Chaska for donuts.
But there's a new place to take a picture because it says Chaska runs on Dunkin'. It's kind of a fun place, I've taken a selfie. Encourage everyone to go take a selfie.
What, what's that called, influencer?
Practicing.
A couple of events. There is two kind of charity events happening on October twelfth that I learned about. One is the Southern Valley Alliance for Battered Women have a benefit and brew event at the Shram House Brewery in Chaska here. It's on Saturday, October twelfth, from one to four. Family-friendly events to raise money for victims of domestic violence. Free will donations accepted. There's some music there, looks like. So that's an event. The other one, which, hold on, I was, is on the same day, a little later, I believe, but it's Tap Into Hope, it's Treehouse, which is located in Chaska. It's at the Inky Brewing in Victoria and it looks like it's from six to ten PM. I thought the times were different that they gave me, so I don't know if their website is accurate because I felt like it was running kind of almost around these times. But same sort of thing, it's a, you know, a fundraising event to benefit the Treehouse. So those are the, the two events. The Human Rights Commission has their film on Thursday that starts at six. I don't know specifically which one because I don't have the information, I left myself in my car. And then the referendum info session is this Wednesday. Yeah, those are what I got.
Very cool. Mr. Grau?
I said this last week, but it hasn't happened yet, so I'll remind you again, October eighteenth, Trail of Fun at Athletic Park, five to eight-thirty. Also, I just saw that Facebook updated for Halloween Live, which is in Chaska Community Center, October twenty-sixth, from four to six. It is October, we're in the season of Halloween and Dia de los Muertos, so all good stuff. And then I would be amiss if I didn't say go Twins.
I'm scared to even check the score. Just a couple of things, we're going to try to reschedule the work session for City Square West for this next meeting on Monday, the ninth, twenty-first, Monday the twenty-first. And second thing, I won't be here on Monday the twenty-first, it's, it's my annual ICMA conference, but Kevin and Nate would take care of the, the work session at night, so.
Do you know roughly what time we're thinking?
It'd be five forty-five. We, we still have some work that we're putting together, we want to make sure we have done before we present it, but I think we're on track to have it that night.
Noel, do you have anything?
Noel, I just want to point out, that's a fantastic shirt, it's got the city of Chaska and the Twins on it.
It's everything.
Oh.
And the town cars.
Many sponsors of Noel. I just received a text message from Matt Clark, our city engineer, that the score is zero-zero after the first inning, so.
It's a one first inning, though.
That's probably like three pitching changes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Must have been bases loaded on both sides. Yeah, only thing I got is just one last reminder that Chaska History Center exhibit is still going on for Chaska during World War I, World War II, so that goes through November fifteenth, so. Anything else? So get out of here and watch the Twins game.
I make a motion to. In the meeting? Adjourn.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Go Twins.